We're on action items. Number one, approval of purchase of equipment from Black Box to replace existing voice network that supports desktop telephones and a five-year software and hardware support for $3,671,575.40. This came to Ops on April 5th for...
Consideration?
Approval of this item would approve a five-year contract for the telephone system upgrade with Black Box. And note, an FAQ attachment was added to the bar yesterday.
I move the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent to execute a five-year contract with Black Box to provide a telephone system upgrade in the amount of $3,671,575.40, plus Washington State sales tax, and to take any necessary actions to implement the contract.
I second the motion.
Mr. Kroll, could you give us a brief introduction to this action item, please?
Yes. Good evening. John Kroll, Chief Information Officer. First, I'd like to thank all the teachers for what they do out there. An update from the introduction, we provided more information on the longevity of the product. We got a 10-year support letter from the vendor. I put some information about the average length is about five to seven years, and our current system actually lasted about 20 years. So, we're very confident that we have a good support plan and look forward to your consideration for this item.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Petu?
I guess my concern is, it says five years, but you're saying that it will go to 10 years in comparison to our last one that lasts a lot longer, but so is it actually five to 10 years that this will last?
Chances are it's going to last, you know, 10 to 20 years, given the history of this vendor. In this current contract, we're signing a five-year contract for support, which includes next-day repair. After five years, that's when we will come with additional support, and that's when we may have the parts depot and that type of thing as we move forward. But the vendor has agreed to support the product for 10 years. So oftentimes, especially with consumer products, the vendor might only support it for like a year. With computers, you're lucky to get three years of support before it's hard to find those parts. With this vendor, they've agreed to provide support for those parts and for 10 years.
Mr. General Counsel, can you come to the box, please? Point of clarification, is the 10 years part of the contract and part of the bar, or do we need to amend said bar?
I apologize. I don't know. I have not seen their letter on 10 years, so I don't know whether it's incorporated into the contract or not. Perhaps, Mr. Kroll, could answer how they've conveyed that to us?
We have it as a letter, and it will be part of the contract?
I would suggest that Mr. Kroll and Mr. Treat sit down, figure out whether we need an amendment so that the 10 years is legally binding. This is real money, and this is a terribly important contract for the district, especially with respect to emergency services. Director Burke?
Just a point of clarification, as I look at the document here, it looks to me like the contract itself is five years, but the vendor is stating through written communications that their expectation is the product will be supportable for 10. But we do not have additional money in the contract which would be required to support it between that five-plus years. So, creating an amendment would require a financial commitment as well.
Do you all want to do a sidebar, and we move on, and we bring you in at number seven to the action agenda?
Sure.
Thank you, sirs. Appreciate very much. Number two, Bex IV, award construction contract P-5099 to CDK.
Point of personal privilege, or point of process, or point of whatever? We have a motion and a second. Do we have to table it, or, I mean, what's the...
We can table.
Just thinking Robert's rules here.
May I have a non-debatable motion to table this to after action agenda item number six?
So moved.
Seconded.
Those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you.
No, sorry, I was an aye for...
I appreciate the heads up. Thank you, sir. Number two, Bex IV, award construction contract P-5099 to CDK Construction Services, Inc., for the Eckstein Middle School Seismic Improvement Project. This came before Ops on April 5th for...
Approval.
Approval of this item would authorize the Superintendent to enter into a construction contract in the amount of $2,917,672 for the Eckstein Middle School Seismic Improvement Project. Motion, please.
I move that the school board authorize the Superintendent to execute construction contract P-5099 to CDK Construction Services, Inc., for the Eckstein Middle School Seismic Improvements Project in the amount of $2,917,672, including alternate numbers one and two, plus Washington State sales tax, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the Superintendent, and to take any necessary action to implement the contract.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? We discussed this previously on introduction. Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number three, approval of guiding principles for the building excellence Bex V capital levy. This came before Ops, April 5th, for...
Consideration?
Approval of this item would approve the board's guiding principles for the Bex V capital levy, and I'll note that the action report was edited since introduction. May I have the motion, please?
I move that the board approve the guiding principles for the Bex V capital levy as attached to this board action report.
I second the motion.
Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? And may I state a personal thank you to the Chair of Operations for a heavy lift on this, and for working in a collaborative fashion with the rest of your colleagues and with senior staff.
You're welcome. Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for working on this. Just as a recap, what this does is it sets our guiding principles for the Bex V levy, the things that are important to us. And for further clarification, which wasn't clear upon introduction, that we've added to the bar now to make it more clear, these guiding principles will be used to assist us in our decision-making around Bex because they get turned into scores that are, for each individual guiding principle, as well as in the policy, there's also some priorities that we have listed. Each of these get a score, which will help us inform our decision-making on Bex and our prioritization. And staff will be bringing the specifics of those scoring, the actual calculations, what's going into those things. So, for example, Equity will have various factors that go into determining what the scoring rubric is. And for each of these guiding principles, as well as the priorities that are stated in the policy 6901, they will come to us in a work session on May 30th. Dr. Herndon? If you could elaborate a little bit more, I'm not feeling very eloquent at the moment.
That's correct. Flipp Herndon, Associate Superintendent for Operations and Facilities. Director Mack is correct. We do have a work session scheduled for the end of May, and at that time, taking these guiding principles into account, we would have that ability to look at and receive feedback from the board about, this is what the scoring looks like for each of these guiding principles, and then have any feedback and modify if necessary.
Director Burke?
One question, one comment. So, regarding the rubrics and metrics, obviously, that's a really important body of work. Is there clarity around what that process looks like to get from the guiding principles to an actual, you know, rubric document that we can use? Is that going to be done at the work session, or prior to the work session, or using...how does that work?
So, staff have actually already started working on this. So, this is, the priorities that were stated in the policy have been scored and adopted by previous boards for previous Bex or BTA. Those have been included in the building conditions report. So, there is overlap between those priorities and our priorities, and in working with staff, I think we've culled it down to seven distinct names, and some of those will use some of the existing rubrics that are in the conditions report. Equity is one that needs to be created, and staff is already working on that. They've already created a draft chart, and so that'll be coming together, and all that information will be available for us.
Okay, so to mirror back, at the work session, we will have a near-final work product that we'll be able to look at, comment on, or will that be final, what comes to the work session, and we'll be applying it?
No, it will not be final at that point. It'll be, this is what we're proposing, this is how the, these are the specific calculations for each of the priorities and how the rubrics are set up, and staff will take feedback on that. Additionally, another bar that is coming forward next is the task force, if that is approved as well. The task force will also review those and their matrices, and provide additional recommendations and thoughts to us to give us additional oversight.
Thank you. So then, the comment relates to the second guiding principle about right-size capacity, and I've mentioned before, you know, some of my concerns around how we calculate that. I want to be really cognizant that if the state is asking us to reduce our K3 staffing ratios, but is not providing full funding for the capital infrastructure, I'm reluctant to go out to our voters and ask them to do that. And so if all of our computations of right size use the adjusted ratios, then that has the effect of creating essentially voter-funded class-size reduction. And so I'm just cognizant that that's a component of our Bex dollars, that we have to either decide, yes, we're open to that, we're looking to our voters to fund that, as compared to the state. My personal feeling as a director is that that's not the highest priority. So I just want to understand how that fits in to the dialogue, and it doesn't have to be now, because I know that's probably not a good deus concept, but as part of our work session, if we could understand that.
Clarification question, if I might. When you say voter-funded, are you talking about local levy voter-funded?
Yes, I would be talking about funded through our Bex V if we have a right-size capacity that is based on adjusted, state-adjusted ratios, but that doesn't consider state-allocated extra capital dollars.
Unfunded mandate?
Yes, thank you.
Or partially-funded unfunded mandate, because there have been some K3 class-size reduction dollars that have come down from the state, not sufficient by any means to the need. Your point is duly noted, and in having conversations with staff around the development of the facilities master plan and the capacity analysis, we've had that conversation around, do we show the capacity analysis what right-size capacity is, including K3's class-size reduction, and not including, and having those two separated out so that we can actually weigh those?
Thank you. I do understand that this is a complicated issue, and that we're partway through it, and that it's partly funded, and so it may not be possible to extract it, but I just want to be conscious that at some point, we lose our opportunity to have this discussion.
I have a point of clarification, if I might. So, previous boards have put together guiding principles. How is it that we missed Raynor Beach High School and some of our other Title I high-needs schools for so long?
It's a good question. I can't necessarily answer, since I wasn't around during those conversations, but I think, as with most levies, just as you as a board are going through this, you do have your guiding principles that you adopt, and in some cases, didn't prioritize what those are. So you have, let's say, five guiding principles of equal weight, and then, as a board, debating which items, given all of the feedback from community, and the size of the particular levy, you feel you can deliver on, noting some of the major issues that we've talked about, safety and security, building condition, and capacity. And that's, you know, I've had conversations, I think, with all of you about that kind of balance that you have between capacity and condition, and it's a challenge. Can't really go all one way, can't really go all the other, so it's how you figure out what that is. But as far as I know, I can't explain previous decisions about including or not including projects on previous ones.
Okay, and it's my understanding, we didn't have a race in equity component on the previous guiding principles?
Correct.
So, if we are going to be consistent on policy 0030, would it then necessarily follow that dollars follow, dollars and commitment follow to our high-needs schools?
Well, I think there are a couple ways that you can look at that, but I believe the intent of 0030 is to take a look at what the equitable distribution of resources are throughout the district, and that includes capital dollars. And, again, previously for Bex IV, policy 0030 didn't exist, at least in the implementation phase of that. So, I think this is an excellent opportunity to see how that particular policy looks in action for a very public and sizable investment of capital dollars throughout our city.
Director Mack, please.
I think that's particularly, that's particularly why I'm really excited about adopting these guiding principles, presumably that we do adopt them, because we have identified that equity is a priority, and we will have a scoring matrix, so to, you know, we are going to have that as part of our decision-making, and it will be more clear as to potentially which projects might, you know, rate higher on an equity score versus other projects, and that will help inform our decision-making, and I feel really proud of doing that, of working to ensure that we state that priority very clearly.
Other questions, comments, concerns? Dr. Larry Nyland?
I would predict, got principles on one end that are kind of vague and squishy. I agree with the principles, they're great principles, but they don't vote, so ultimately, you have to balance them out. And then, we're talking about a rubric and a scoring mechanism. My prediction is that, in the end, it's going to be a discussion about that, and that, depending on how rigorous the rubric is, then it's going to be, well, how does this one turn out? How does that one turn out? And if we weight Equity a little bit more, what happens over here? If we weight age of buildings a little bit more, how does that happen? I think Flipp gave a great answer in terms of Raynor Beach. As far as I know, none of us know the real answer to that, but even if you just constrain it to the MANG report and the condition of the building, that we've paid somebody thousands of dollars who know how to do this, to go through every single building, you still get to this point where Raynor Beach would beg to differ, but I think there's a lot of schools on that list that have greater need, according to the engineers, than Raynor Beach does. So, you're going to figure out, well, how much money goes to capacity? How much money goes to condition? How much money goes to these other issues, like safety, seismic, et cetera? And then, we're going to look at the equity part and say, who benefits, and is that fair and equitable, and should we reposition some of the money, and probably, quite frankly, take it away from some of the buildings that maybe have a condition issue, and use more of it for equity, or take it away from some of the places where we have capacity needs, and give it to Equity. So, I think it's a great opportunity, and it's a great exercise, and we know that there's not going to be enough money in the end to do it all, so it's still going to come down to tough decisions.
Thank you. Other questions, comments, concerns? Director Pinkham?
So, flashing back to the time when Loyal Heights was being constructed, and we had some community concerned about play space, and is also brought up in public testimony. In the guiding principles, we do mention sufficient core spaces and safe playgrounds, and in right-size capacity, we've mentioned to match student enrollment demand and appropriate lot coverage. Are those two combined, we're assuming then that means that we'll have safe playgrounds that are also going to be appropriate size? Or do we need to call out specifically that we want to make sure that we have safe playgrounds that are appropriate-sized? Do we need to specifically call that out?
Director Mack, and then Dr. Herndon, please.
So, my sense in how we have laid it out here in the guiding principles is that it is, it's stated as a priority, safe playgrounds and enough space, and it's stated in both ways. It is the challenge when we look at specific projects, whether or not they're actually potentially reducing lot coverage. So those are the kind of things that we will be looking at when we score these things for right-size capacity. Is it, you know, is it meeting this? So, I think, I do believe that it is included in the priorities, and that it more clearly states that that is our goal.
I would agree with that. I think each particular location and building has challenges that are unique to that site. Not all of our sites are the same. They vary in their acreage size, they vary in the age of the buildings, they vary in the core spaces that they already have available. So, to compare a place like Magnolia, which is tiny, tiny, doesn't have 40,000 square feet to begin with of play space, there's no way to even incorporate that much play space for that particular spot. So, I think to your point, to try and look at each of the projects and say, okay, if we're looking at the design of these schools, outdoor play space is important for the development of our children as well, as well as the interior space, what's the best balance that we have, given the lot and uniqueness for each one of those projects?
Director Pinkham?
Yeah, so like with Webster now, and like building that gymnasium, and how much the outdoor play space that's taking up, and how do we measure those and come to terms, and so those kind of challenges. I know it's going to be tough, you know, we need the space, you know, class-size room reduction, it means we need more rooms, so we can have smaller teacher-to-student ratios, but again, if we're not being funded for it, and we're limited on the land space that we have, it's going to be difficult. So, I hope that we will make sure that we keep both of those in mind, and not treat them separately.
I think what you might be able to see even is, in the possible projects, we can take a look at what that balance is. You know, we strive for an acre of exterior play space for each of the elementary schools, and for the most part, most of our schools do have that. There are some clearly that don't, though, just because of the size of the lot. Two acres is tough to get half of that as exterior play space.
Director Mack?
I also want to, since you used Magnolia as an example, Magnolia used to have a beautiful play area at the back of it, which is now a city park.
Correct.
So, our joint-use agreements can come into play in some of our facilities when we reopen buildings and think about as well. So I just want to remind us of those opportunities of working with the city to, you know, potentially find ways to utilize these parks that were school playgrounds previously.
And I would suggest to you that the MOU in November has a couple of hooks that we can hang our hat on. Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Burke? Other comments, questions, concerns? Seeing none? Roll call, please.
Director DeWolf?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Petu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number four, task force for facilities master plan. Approval of this item would create a task force intended to support the school board's oversight of capital planning by reviewing elements of the district's draft long-range facilities master plan. Please note that on May 8th, the action report and attachment were edited. Motion, please.
I move that the school board authorize and approve the formation and charge of the task force for facilities master plan as attached to this board action report.
I might add, this did go through executive committee, it's not listed on here, but it came through executive committee, and our Ops Chair picked up the baton with the assistance of staff and support of staff.
I second the motion.
Thank you. Director Mack?
So, this task force, at the moment, we don't have a task force or advisory committee focused on capacity facility planning activities. We have in the past, we just had the High School Boundaries Task Force, which ended their work. Last year, there was Capacity Management Task Force. We do have the Bex BTA Oversight Committee, and they do a little forward-looking, but it's not their main work. Their main work is kind of looking as the projects are coming through, to review those projects as they're coming through. So, the facilities master plan is the basis of our planning for all of our buildings across the district, and that plan is what informs our selection of Bex projects. That plan is being worked on by staff right now. It has a pretty long table of contents, and it's, you know, it's comprehensive in terms of capacity analysis, enrollment projections, the conditions assessment, all the buildings that are not opened, et cetera. There's lots of pieces of the facilities master plan. Because of the short timeframe that we have for adopting the priorities of projects for Bex V, and the need to have some support from the community and additional community engagement, some oversight support, this task force will specifically look at two key aspects of the facilities master plan, not the entire thing, because we don't have as much time to do the entire thing, but the two key aspects will be the capacity analysis, to review that and provide any recommendations in general of, yes, that area of the city seems to need more seats for X reasons, that sort of thing, as well as the scoring of our priorities, to review those and give an extra eye on, yes, the scoring kind of makes sense, or you didn't consider this aspect, and that sort of thing. So that can help inform the facilities master plan, as well as us with Bex V project selection. The other thing that was added to this bar, and was a part of it before, but also is more clearly stated, is that not only is Equity one of the priorities that will be part of the scoring matrix that the task force will be reviewing, and that we've stated that, but we will be using the racial equity toolkit with this task force. Step one, I've already drafted. Step two is actually specific... Step two is actually specifically reviewing data by community. So, that is exactly what the task force is doing. And we will have, with the task force, we'll have some training. We'll start the conversation off around racial equity. That's how we're gonna launch the task force. And so, I'm super excited about the support from staff. It's a short timeframe, but I think we can do some really good work and get some community engagement on this.
Director Herndon, it's my impression that staff is very much in favor of this work.
Correct.
Okay. Comments, questions, concerns from my colleagues? Director DeWolff, please.
Yes, thank you, President Harris. I just wanted to reiterate too. One of the... I spent a long, good conversation with Eden earlier this week in trying to really be thorough in our commitment to racial equity. And I don't want it to necessarily get lost, but one of the things we are gonna... we're trying on this task force and I hope will be a model for how all of our future task forces, committees, subcommittees, sub-work groups, et cetera, et cetera, commissions, councils, advisory groups, all of those folks. What we're excited to do for this, what I think is different than anything else, is that each of the folks will participate in a racial equity training that will ground the work. And so, this is kind of a new concept. And so, I'm really excited about the addition of that. And so, thank you, Eden, for working together on that. And I will be eagerly waiting to hear how that goes with that team and that group and then looking to maybe find a way to include that in our future task forces and commission committee, subcommittee work. So, thank you for finding the common ground there. Okay, that was it.
I have a question for General Counsel. Our other task forces that we're launching presently, the Information Technology Advisory Council and the Advanced Learning, there's nothing in those bars or charges that would prevent racial equity training, is there?
No, absolutely not.
Wouldn't mandate it, but it wouldn't prevent it?
No, there's absolutely nothing in either of those charges that would prevent that.
Then I would respectfully suggest that the senior staff, whose portfolios those reside in, would take the hint. I think that's a... that's a good modeling. Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from my colleagues? Director Mack? Director Burke?
Yeah, I just wanted to add really quick that I believe that we're ready, if this passes tonight, to advertise this out, you know, potentially by the end of the week. And the advertisement will be directly sent to folks that have participated on enrollment planning slash capacity facilities management task forces in the past, the experts that we know of. So, folks like from the Capacity Management Task Force, BEX BTA, et cetera, will get direct emails on notifying them of this task force and asking for their potential participation, as well as broadly advertised.
And who on the comms team is leading community engagement for this? And where's the community engagement plan for it?
That one, Director and Mack and I were speaking about that as we were talking about how to broadcast this out best. We were gonna speak after tonight's meeting to figure out what our best plan for it is. So, I can't answer that right now, but we wanna identify that and make sure we can get this out as quickly as possible.
But as well as possible?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay. Thank you. That was a concern of the last couple of task force bars. And if we're gonna do it, let's do it right. Other comments, questions, concerns? Director Burke?
Thank you for your comments, which almost covered it. I just wanted to understand the timing and, you know, how we were doing the outreach, when we were doing the outreach. It sounds like that is a little bit of an evolving plan, but because it's potentially a little bit narrow recruiting, more narrow recruitment, we already have a target. The timeline on this shows basically May through August. Do we actually anticipate that work will start in May? Or is that something that, like, you know, that's three weeks?
I think that instead of... sometimes task forces go out and say, okay, we're gonna be meeting every Monday, you know, every third Monday at this time and that that's already set before the task forces' members have been selected. In this case, because of the short-term nature of the work, we essentially have June, July, August. And there's not a lot going on in the district in July. So, we have less than three months and we're envisioning maybe four to six meetings. So, essentially, the idea is to see who might be available and is interested in engaging and work together to find timing that will work best for most people, as well as the facilitator. And we also need to narrow in on exactly how those agendas would flow. But I believe that we can very effectively tee up the session so that they have information ahead of time. We have the questions clear that we're asking them to answer and that sort of thing, so.
Okay. The other aspect of that is recognizing that this work is to provide recommendations for this Facilities Master Plan. Is there a date certain at which the Facilities Master Plan will be anchored?
This is a very good question. The first draft of it is supposed to be coming to Ops June. And then, it's supposed to be adopted in August, if I know the timing. So, that's the plan at this point. Our BEX V project list, et cetera, has to be adopted by end of November at the very latest. So, there's a little bit of squishy room in there for the Facilities Master Plan to get completed, but the goal right now is to have it come and be finalized in August.
Thank you.
And so, the task force is working in parallel with staff on that.
And would we be having a work session for the entire board with the task force's participation prior to it coming to the full board? Do you anticipate that?
I would suspect so currently. I do believe we have a May work session, a June work session, and an August work session with the board around BEX V. So, I would guess probably not the May one, maybe the June one or definitely the August one. So, we have tried to schedule out. I don't know if we have a date yet for August, but I do believe we have May and June set already.
Terrific. Dr. Nyland, please.
I'm concerned. We've got a lot of players. So, we've got... we've tried to get public engagement. We haven't gotten a lot. We're now trying to set up a task force. I think we need to be very careful to clarify in the beginning what the level of decision-making is. In my mind, maybe not in the mind of the board, but that should be clarified. They are not a recommending. They're not a deciding body. And we're in the process of having political conversations with the city of Seattle. So, we're trying to balance public engagement that we've said that we wanna do more of. We haven't done that, in my mind, very successfully yet. We've done what we usually do and we've done that well. But when we go out to the voters and ask for a billion dollars and we point backwards and say that we have engaged, how many? 125 people so far?
In person.
In person.
Correct.
And then we go through a rubric, which, again, what I said earlier, I don't think it will be conclusive. I don't think we'll be able to point to the rubric and say, we scored everything perfectly and we put the cutoff right here and there'll be no questions about that. I think that, just as we heard tonight, people will see different parts of the rubric the way that they would like to see it. And we'll hear back from them in those ways. And as we've had the conversation with the city, recognizing that Rainier Beach is a big project, recognizing that High School Number 12 is a big project, and safety is important, there's not a lot of money left over. So, or, we need to go out for a really, really, really big ask and... I won't say what I was gonna say.
Thank you.
We need to... yeah, we're just setting in play a lot of moving pieces and I'm worried about how all of them are gonna land in a way that, yeah, kinda no good deed goes unpunished. It's kinda like, we're gonna try really, really hard and, yeah, I'll stop.
Thank you. Director Mack?
I agree that, you know, the entire process of developing BEX V is... all of those moving parts are already in play. It's all there. What setting the guiding principles does, what doing the rubrics does, what having a task force that engages in the conversations around what the capacity analysis is, not telling us, yes, do this project. They're just telling us, capacity analysis, yes, in this area of the city, there may need to be additional seats for such and such. And then also looking specifically at the priorities and the way that those are scored. They're not tasked with giving us specific recommendations on specific projects. They're helping us to support the analysis that staff is doing, that we are gonna be relying on to do our decision-making. And I think that deliberation will add value to our process and help us clarify. It still makes the decisions difficult and we'll still have those. But I feel a lot more comfortable having some additional analysis and support to do this work and be able to make those decisions soundly.
Director Burke?
From the conversation that I'm hearing here, would it be a valid assessment to say that this task force is like a public way of helping us identify our potential blind spots?
Yes. Yes, Director Burke?
Yes.
And I would add in that perhaps by being better listeners, had we not closed nine schools some years ago, and had we had a collaborative conversation, we'd be much farther ahead in both the monetary and the trust departments. Roll call, please.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Number five, Review and Approval of Career and Technical Education 2018 Annual Plan per Policy 2170. This came before CNI April 17 for?
For consideration.
Approval of this item would approve the 2018 Career and Technical Education Annual Plan. The motion, please.
I move that the board approve the 2018 Career and Technical Education Annual Plan as attached to this board action report.
I understand that there... I'm sorry.
I second the motion.
Understand that there is a Scrivener's Amendment that was not cut previously, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for raising, President Harris. Caleb Perkins, Director of College and Career readiness. I'll just acknowledge that we have Jane Hendrickson here, our CTE Program Manager, and Dan Goleman, our Principal of Skills Center. Excited to have the opportunity to present the plan for vote. Appreciate how collaborative and inclusive and positive the development of this plan has been. And we are excited to begin formally implementing the plan, as well as continuing to make this a living document through the SMART goal process and a number of other conversations to make these ideas really come to life. In that spirit, I do wanna acknowledge that Director Pinkham made an excellent suggestion and request last time we met on this to add the word, reference to a tribal government on page 33 in the description of career pathways and clusters. And thus, I would like to apologize for that oversight. It is not in the version that's before you. And would like to subsequently request a motion from the board to add a reference to tribal government so that on page 33, under Government and Public Administration, it would say something to the effect of planning and executing government functions at the local, state, federal, and tribal levels. I appreciate you considering that request.
May I hear such a motion for an amendment?
Sure. I move that we amend... which, what do we call on this? Amend the Appendix B Career Classes and Pathways Bullet Government and Public Administration to read, "Planning and Executing Government Functions at the Local, State, Federal, and Tribal Levels," rather than as stated currently in the form.
Second?
Second.
May I have a roll call on the amendment, please?
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This amendment has passed unanimously.
Okay. May I hear comments, questions, concerns from my colleague for the bar as amended?
Support. I'm enthusiastic.
Can I just say that I think it's a great report? Thank you.
And may I just say that this is really hitting one of my interim personal goals. I appreciate the heavy lift. I appreciate the new energy. I appreciate the collaborative nature, that teaching and learning and career corrected, connected, corrected, connected learning is brought to the table. Much appreciated. Thank you. And to your teams. Director Geary?
I think it's a really great tool for all of us to use in all of our outreach and talking to just community partners. It seems to me that there are a lot of people out there who, as you have conversations, they wanna know how they can get involved. And it can be anywhere. And it's so nice to have something so comprehensive to refer to and to give them as a starting point to inspire just that outlook. And, yeah, so it's really good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Director Pinkham?
Yeah, and I too wanna echo thanks for this. And part of kinda addressing, we're gonna remember before, that as we look at this career and technical education, that does fill the needs of the community. What are we missing? What do we need that our community doesn't have? You know, like you talked about health services. We don't have health service here and we need health services to have a good community. So, let's see if we can help provide that so our community becomes more enhanced and rich. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
Of course.
Director Burke?
I would also like to reach out to other staff to share some of their expertise. I think one of the things that I've struggled with as a director is how to engage support partners in this work. And I think there's lots of examples, you know, in our community partnership group with Dr. Jones and his expertise. And so, I would just ask you to reach out to those individuals, which I believe you already are working with, to understand how we're building a partner network in a way that's scalable and sustainable.
I appreciate the suggestion.
Saying no further comments, questions, concerns? Roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolff?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion as amended has passed unanimously.
Thank you. Number six, Expansion of Native American Educational Programming. This bar came before CNI April 17 for?
Approval.
Approval of this item would approve $250,000 of additional baseline funds to expand the Native American educational program, including the addition of Sakachib. Close? No? Program in the North. Staff for after-school programs and a secondary liaison case manager in the North. Motion, please.
I move that the school board approve $250,000 of additional general funds, beginning on the 2018-19 school year, to expand the Native American educational program, including the addition of a Sakachi program in the North, staff for after-school programs, and a secondary liaison case manager in the North. a secondary liaison case manager in the North.
I second the motion.
Short introduction, please.
As pointed out in the motion, this would add $250,000 to our Native American education programming in Seattle Public Schools. I will ask Gail Morris to speak to more specific opportunities that these funds would provide.
Hello, Gail Morris, Natchana First Nations, Native American Education Manager. Okay, I'm gonna tell you how to say it. I'll send it to you in an email as well. It's Shaka-
Shaka-
Chib.
Chib.
Shakachib. And it's Southern LaShute seed from this here area of the Duamish, and it means we lift you up in the highest of honor. So it's Shaka Chib. So I wanna talk about how this funding would support our program. First of all, we need to meet our students where they're at, and our students are distributed all over, and we need to be able to give them the same opportunities that they're seeing at Chief CE Health. One thing that was mentioned earlier by Director DeWolfe was our population of homeless students throughout, and then also our native students. We have a lot in the South End, and so our Shakachib is able to help those students with wraparound services. We keep things in the classroom for them. It also helps students to come in and get extra support to stay in school. This is really important for our students. Oftentimes, our students don't feel inclined to work through their problems, and I'm talking about the ones that need help, not all students. And so we have that support system from Ms. Boo and Mr. Ben, who are out there constantly working all day through IEP meetings, and giving that added support for students to stay in school while they can still play football, while they can still play an instrument or take a language, or any of those things that they want in a neighborhood school. I also wanna talk about, when we were looking at developing this program, we were looking at Proyectos Saber. Proyectos Saber are in quite a few schools, middle schools and high schools. This program benefits those students, like Proyectos Saber does for their students. And so that's really needed in the schools. When our students go, it's a place for them to just take a breath, to put their head down, to figure out what they're gonna do next, how they could've done something differently, or just get their paper in for the last minute. I also wanna talk about, a little bit more in detail, about the wraparound services that we're able to provide students there. And it isn't always just for homelessness or mental health, or food, or helping them through McKinney-Vento and getting, you know, cleats for football. But it's also, we have BFBI. It's a publishing company in Greenwood, and so our students write this amazing book, and they talk about who they are in this book, and I've handed them out before. But that's an opportunity for students, and two of our students' stories were picked this, just this year, and it's going into a bigger book that's gonna be distributed in bookstores. And Ms. Boo called me and said, "It's even gonna be at Tale Lev," and so she was really excited about that. That two of our students were actually picked at a higher level, you know, and they want to work more in our program. They're writing bigger grants to write more, to get more money, to have more of our native students write. So when I look at the extra funding, not only for the classroom, but I'm looking at how we help students in schools to stay in school. One of our objectives is high school dropout prevention. We can go to the schools and advocate for students. We can talk to counselors. Counselors are actually our best friends for high school students. So we work very closely with counselors all over in all the schools. In fact, we just sent out today to all the counselors for our summer school program, our high school credit retrieval. My program works year-round, academics year-round. So we are so excited that we're now looking at placing students into our summer school program at Meany Middle School. So these are just some of the things that will help with that funding, to bring on more people, to do more outreach into the schools. It is needed. A lot of our students need that extra support just to get through. There are a few other things I wanted to talk about, but so many people have touched base on that tonight. So I just wanna leave that there, just that you understand that the work that we do, well, it's a lot of work. We don't have, I don't have enough staff. They're already maxed out. I think in combined caseloads, we're probably reaching out to at least 350 to 400 students at any given time with a family support worker as well. So, yeah, we could use some help. Shakachib.
Shakachib.
Yes.
Thank you. Director Pinkham, then Director Mack? No, Director Pinkham?
Yeah, I had, no, Shakachib, there's no credit tied to this, so it's more a service for our students, right? So-
It is credit.
There is credit, and the credit-
It's a .5 credit.
-goes towards, and hopefully will be wrapped into the 24 credits that's required to graduate. Or how soon is it any credit in middle school, or is it-
Good. Since we've had Shakachib at Denny and CE Health, every student that is in the classroom gets .5 credits. It's a native leadership class.
.5, you said? Thank you.
Selective.
Other questions, comments, concerns? I have a question.
Yes.
We heard a great deal this evening and previously about an Indian heritage high school. This is not an either-or proposition. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And could this be potentially a step towards exploring that but meeting the immediate needs?
So-
I'm looking for a framing reference here.
Sure. Let me give an example of this classroom. So, and first of all, thank you Dr. Nylund, because he understands how this works by being in Marysville. Most tribes give money into school districts to have these type of classrooms. They may have a tribal school, they may not have a tribal school. But they do give money to districts to have these classrooms for native students to attend. And so, in looking at this class, it had, in creating these classrooms like Proyectos Saber, it was not tied to anything other than just meeting students where they're at in the classroom. In my mind, in the conversations I've had, the funding would not go away. And like I said earlier about tribes doing this, just because they have a tribal school, they don't pull their money out of the local educational agencies around them. They still continue to support their students that attend those schools that aren't a tribal school or any of those schools. Does that answer your question?
Not necessarily, but you bring up another thread. Do we have tribal financial support for this?
No.
And is it something that we have explored?
We don't have any tribal funding for this. The Duamish are not federally recognized, nor are they state-recognized, so there's no funding available there. That's why we get the funding through baseline here. I've not explored it. I have not asked Suquamish or Mukulshoot if they would fund it, because they fund their own districts that surround or bump up against their reservations and tribal lands. So I don't know how that would look coming into here. I mean, you could ask, right? Doesn't mean that they will do it, but they're not obligated to, no.
Director DeWolfe, please.
I was just gonna add too, I think that there, there is room and some potential for us to be better partners with the surrounding tribes. So I see some promise. But I mean, no guarantee, but definitely some potential. And I think building those relationships out may facilitate that.
Right.
No promises, but we, full landscape of opportunity ahead of us.
Thank you. Director Patu?
Just for clarification, is the Proyector program the same as the Native American program?
It was, the framework around it is the same, but it isn't. So Shakachib is for Native American students, and so we look at what students are in the schools, and then we work with the counselors into building them into the classroom so that they can have an opportunity to come in. And we recruit students so that it isn't just where a principal could say, "Oh, let's just put them in this class," because that's not what it's for. It's for, a place for native students to have priority to go into that class. Now, having said that, are all of our students 100% native? No. We have a few students that have come in that are not native. Not a lot, but, you know.
Last question, I think. Have we decided where this North End Shakachib will be placed?
We've talked about it.
We are in the process of putting together a briefing paper that will consider the options. Ideally, the considerations are around the proximity of students that would be served in the North End. Where is the highest population density for that consideration? The model that we currently have that is successful at Denny-South is serving both middle school students and high school students on that campus, and we would like to see if that's a possibility in the North as well. That would, of course, point us in the direction of Nathan Hale and Jane Adams. The other option would be, say, Eagle Staff and Ingram or something like that. Because of the distance between schools, we would not be able to replicate exactly the model that we have in the Southwest. So those are just considerations in going into the briefing paper, but a final decision has not been made at this time.
Director Pinkham?
We've, I brought this up before, as far as identifying our native students, and I know you've been working on it. So when you look at the demographics, are we pulling maybe those multiracial native students that may be counted as Hispanic, so those aren't getting lost? So, that's my fear, is a lot of our native students are multiracial, and asking them just to check only native isn't really fair, 'cause then they're denying half of themselves, basically. So are we able to, with the numbers that you said, hey, we got a number of students at Nathan Hale, Jams, that includes those that may be two or more races or Hispanic?
Thank you, Director Pinkham. If you remember in my presentation, and I showed you several different categories of how we look at Native American students, one was those that self-identify. Those are the ones that are two or more races, and then there's under-Hispanic, and then there's our 506. That's what we work with all the time. It's tedious and it's a lot of work. Well, we did put on the new enrollment 2B, box 2B. We have our own, but we still haven't figured out how we can get all the data to correspond with one another. Because, quite frankly, the one in the Hispanic box, that's where we find a lot of, and I mentioned this in my presentation before, was that we get a lot of Mexican families that say other American Indian. That's where they check the box. So we literally have to call. We have to work with Spanish-speaking people, because they think that perhaps we're ICE-checking on them when we're talking about a federally-recognized tribe. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that we do, but we're very intentional when we're looking for native students, and families know how to find us as well.
Yeah. Thanks just for getting that on the record.
You bet.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, roll call, please.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director DeWolfe?
Aye.
Director Geary?
Aye.
Director Mack?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
This motion has passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's go back to number one. Approval of purchase of equipment from Black Box to replace existing voice network that supports desktop telephones and five-year software and hardware support for $3,671,575.40. Approval of this item would approve a five-year contract for the telephone system upgrade with Black Box. Can Mr. Kroll and Mr. Treet report back as to your sidebars on the 10-year piece, please?
John Kroll, Chief Information Officer. After speaking with the General Counsel, we will need to pull this item in order to add something that we can add to, add to the contract. So I will have to meet with the vendor and negotiate something like that.
Thank you for your understanding. It's a tough job sometimes to push back, but this is the public's money. Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduction items, number one.
Point of clarification?
Excuse me, sir.
Question on that, I just wanna make sure that if, if we're looking at a, an adjustment to this that includes an incremental cost, that we're deliberate about, are we paying more for that extra five years and what that amount is? I'm not ready to make a blanket decision that, yes, we should do an extended warranty for the foreseeable future. So I wanna be cognizant that that hasn't been discussed in committee and would need some-
Director Geary? Thank you. Good point.
That's a good point, and what I understood the letter to say is that they're assuring us that should we need service 10 years out, they would be able to provide it, not that we are guaranteed to pay for it. So it would seem to me that that assurance could be clarified within the contract, even without creating an extra fiduciary obligation on our part. But if you can negotiate a 10-year for the same price because of your honorary board, that would be awesome, too.
Thank you.
And your CEO can watch us on YouTube. Number one, introduction. Approval for, it'll come back to us. Approval for Contract Amendment with School Data Solutions for School-Based Implementation of MTSS Student Data Portal, RFP 09615. This came before CNI April 17 for?
And was moved forward for consideration.
Approval of this item would authorize the Superintendent to execute a Contract Amendment with School Data Solutions in the amount of $274,000 for the Student Data Portal Home Room in the form of the Contract Amendment dated March 28, 2018. Chief Jesse, would you like to give us a short presentation?
I'll highlight the word "short." Hi, Wyatt Jesse, Chief of Student Support Services. This is a continuation of our contract with School Data Solutions. Actually just met with them today. Really excited about this work. Again, our vision is so that every staff member here in Seattle Public Schools can know each and every student's story, strength and need, and that's critical to eliminating opportunity gap. You can't address a student's needs unless you know what's going on with them. And so the problem is, too often, some of our staff don't have the whole story, don't have all the information in one spot. This provides that. In addition, as we've talked about at CNI, a lot of schools and staff use spreadsheets. Spreadsheets are oftentimes incomplete, or they get into the hands of people or access to where it's just not appropriate around FERPA. So this helps us provide some better solutions, ease of access. And so that's what I moved forward to today, is a contract for $274,000 to continue our work in the 2018-19 school year.
Questions, comments, concerns? I'll bring up the concern that I, go ahead, please, Director Geary.
I would like to hear more about the discussion in CNI around this.
My concern that I brought up in CNI about Home Room is how many of our schools are actually using this and with what kind of, of deep dive, robustness, fidelity, et cetera. It feels slow from what we voted on last year.
This is the first year of implementation, in all fairness, and so we have 1,000, I believe I, that's in your packet, has 1,713 current Home Room users, and that tracks somewhere between monthly usage rates of 1,000 to 2,000, which is actually quite a lot. And I will agree with you definitely in this, I think in your, in your comment or that, collecting that conversation that we had from Board President Harris is just around increasing the usage. And so we have a further, more robust Home Room PD online plan, outline plan, I'm sorry, for addressing this needs. The trickiness with Home Room is- The trickiness with Home Room is, it's not something that just is easy to just pick up on a quick guide video. You actually, as requested, people like to get, to use that tool, just like anybody else with any other sense of technology is, use it as you are doing the work to use it for, not just by itself. So, and that's what our plan is, and so I will hold us accountable. I said I would come back to CNI with those usage rates and report out on that, and that's what we'll do.
Director Burke, did you wish to address this?
I think that that was, was definitely one of the, you know, at CNI, the conversation was really understanding how it's used, frequency of use, and sort of use, use across the district. Was it used by every teacher all the time? Was it used by, you know, I think that where we converged on that was that this is a tool for, like, MTSS groups, so it's not an everyday type of thing, but it's something that is part of, more of like a, you know, like a periodic intervention or evaluation cycle, because it's not like this has daily updates of data. So I was wondering if maybe you could just kind of quickly brief us on what are the data elements that roll up into it, so we can get an idea of what's the granularity of that data?
Yeah, so the assessment data that's in the district assessment calendar goes into it anywhere from our state testing that we perform to the interims we're working on right now, so that data can be there, but it migrates into it. Grades, attendance, the Miss Instructional Log, which we've been working on for five years. So the Miss Instructional Log that we've been working on for five years has awesome reports, we've had rave reviews on that, and that was completed finally this spring. I think the, the thing that I would say from being a principal, former principal in this district is, I think it's so easy to ask for it, it's so much harder behind the scenes to actually migrate and integrate data. And any industry faces similar challenges. Here's a great opportunity for us to have an opportunity to see the statewide data, coupled with their own school-wide data, the Faunus-Pennell data's in there, and you can see the elements of their attendance and behavior. I was just going in the back here during this meeting with one of the executive directors, we were going over some data at a school that we were talking about, and we drilled down to individual student to see exactly what their suspension was, and then also what their grades are, and talking about some individual kids at one of our high schools. It's, that's powerful.
Thank, thank you so much for that, and then my, my last request would be, I, you know, I know there's, there's training opportunities. Directors had had an invite, I think on the first round, to sit in on a demo. I'm wondering, is there an opportunity where we would be able to get trained, you know, next training cycle where we could be trained in the use of the tool as well?
Yeah, I think a great time would introduce yourselves to some of our new staffs, so in August, this August, we'll have all new teachers, and as you know, many with the introduction of class size. That'd be a great opportunity, I'll make sure you guys get the invite, I'll write that down right here.
Give us, give us notice, not last minute. Director Mack.
I'm just curious about how long it takes to actually enter the data into this, like, you know, take a school, how many different people and how much time are they spending punching information into the system?
So, so it's actually an efficiency tool, because instead of passing paper around all the time, the really, the best trick of this, for example, with Faunus-Pennell, right? And everybody, you should be familiar with the reading inventory and what level is your student at, I'm trying to explain this quickly, is, so instead of each and every staff member, all they do is just put it onto a shared spreadsheet, and one person just uploads it in. It goes that fast, you can do it all in the same day. It's, it's actually just hours, couple hours worth of work to have all the staff just at least give you the letter for the kids, and then upload it so everybody can have access to it.
So, I believe I asked this question in CNI. Is this a mandatory use tool for our teachers? And the comparison was updating, I believe it's Schoolology, and you have five teachers, and you have three that update it with fidelity, and you have two that aren't gonna do it because it's not a mandatory do, and it's not part of our collective bargaining. Can you address that issue, please?
Yes, I can. So we have now mandated that people don't use a, a couple other vehicles. One is, for example, a use, a particular product called Swiss, where they had entered their incident data. That has been sunset, we just actually send that out to principals so they can no longer use their data. So we are, by forcing out the other types of usage and software, it is requiring them and channeling them towards the use of Home Room. And I know as part of that conversation, I can force people to do a lot of things, I think that detracts from our particular culture of where I need to integrate the work that they do. And again, not the singular sessions for Home Room, because that does not work either for adult learning, but it's actually when they're doing their PLCs, I have a facilitator there to help them access their information, show them, have them do it, monitor that, and grow them towards independence of actually using this tool to inform what's going on with each and every student's story, strength, and need, and adapting their instruction and supports to match it.
Director Geary.
Just in, I'm wondering, given the slowness of its uptake, if you were to do, go back again, back to last summer when we approved the initial contract for the 104 schools, would it have been wiser to originally contact with a fewer schools and roll it up sequentially to save money, and then get more people using it within each of the sites, rather than us having bought all 104 and having it only one-sixth of our teachers using it?
All right, so now we're into really big detail. So, one, I don't believe in the characterization, this is going slowly. I think when you say 2,000 users in a month, that is quite actually heavy's usage rate, as Director Burke was saying, it's not an everyday usage. You're not gonna, the only, the administrators, the people doing some of the database decision-making will pump reports out to people and print them out. We don't want teachers sitting mining data all day long, we want teachers planning. But by having this information really readily available, it provides them with that opportunity. So I just wanted to get some clarity around that, but I do appreciate, most certainly, around the issue that we have around the rollout. That's why we did a field test last year, and so we did a field test only with about, I believe it's 25 schools, and rolled that up to do a rollout this year. And one of those challenges, and I know you know this, is schools are all over the place with this work. And so that's, that's actually where some of our challenges, the site-based leadership, and as Director Nyland, Wyeth, move that pendulum and get it towards the middle, that's what I'm, that's what I'm essentially trying to do, and that's why we are sunsetting those other things. Hold me accountable for moving forward for the usage rates, I'd be really excited about that. We're gonna do a big kickoff with this tool at this SLI. We were not able to migrate the data for the last August SLI, that was one of the, part of the problems I have not, we have not talked about today.
Director Pinkham, and then Dr. Nyland.
So what is, I guess, the lift with this for our, our staff and teachers? Is there a huge learning curve to use this, or is it pretty straightforward? Here's the tool, upload the papers or the documents, and you're good to go? Or, and can then parents also access what teachers are saying about their students?
Right, so we have another vehicle for the access for the parents, so I'll just set that up off to the side. This is, this tool's strictly meant for instructional purposes and having that information for those folks. The, the nice thing is you could print a report for your, you know, student for upcoming parent-teacher conferences, that would be a more appropriate usage for them. I would say it's no more complex than using Excel spreadsheet. That's my best analogy within the world of technology.
So whoever struggles with Excel, me.
Well, they're not apples to or, they're an apples to oranges comparison, I'm just trying to talk about, just a skill difficulty, if you'll allow me.
And would you give it, put a cost on that for what it would take to train instructors to use this?
Yeah, and so the training is really best, again, integrated within the schools, and so central to that is obviously school leaders and usage, and then those experts. So we do have data leads at each school, we've gone out and given them those trainings, so that's, that's worked in a, in a great sense. And again, you know, I'll go back to, quite a few people are using this, if I have right now, currently, the current usage rate is 1,713, that's a, that's a really good, pretty robust number of people looking at data across this district when you have around 4,000 teachers.
So our current users can train new users, how do you, we don't have to bring in someone from the Home Room to, hey, here's how to use, how to use it?
That's why in that handout, you'll notice that we're just gunning, gunning for new teachers. That'll be helpful to get in the entry point, as opposed to somebody who's been 20 years saying, I've seen this, I'll wait until I'm really required to do this.
Director Nyland. Excuse me, Dr. Nyland.
As Wyatt said, it's about moving the pendulum, so thank you to the board for keeping the focus on four years or three years or five goals or whatever it is. We're keeping the focus, and that means that I envision, well, I haven't gotten this one to you in a graphic form, but I envision the MTSS work in stair steps. So this year, we've been really working on the MTSS teams and knowing the students by story, strength, and need, and making sure that they're in a program. And we're learning from the green schools who have already known how to do this for some time. We're coordinating PD so that the yellow schools get the idea, and then Wyeth and his team are out meeting with the 20 schools that aren't there yet, and doing really good coaching around what all do you have going, what seems to be, what did you say that you would do six weeks ago, and have you done it? What are your issues right now? How is it gonna move the needle? And how can we support you? And, and we're doing it. We're moving the pendulum back, and we're moving it very appropriately to what we can identify as best practice, and we're doing it with coaching and support and love and affection and determination that you will do this. Meanwhile, second level is Home Room. So Home Room was rolled out, as we've just talked about it, with enthusiastic support from 15 schools or something like that, and then it was rolled into the rest of the schools and made available. As I've talked with the schools, they're all in different places for good reasons. Somebody might have a climate issue that they're working on, somebody might have the CCC implementation of new curriculum issue that they're working on, someone else may have a teacher that they need to put on probation. And so some of the principals, principals that aren't there yet for Home Room are saying, it's working for me. It's on a spreadsheet, I've got my plate full, I'm working my spreadsheet, and we'll work on bringing teachers along as we go through the year. And meanwhile, we continue to work bugs out with Home Room, we have more supporters, we have more people using it, and part of SLI will be principals hearing from principals, yeah, this works really awesome, this is how we use it in our building. So it is, the old joke about how many people it takes to change a light bulb, it's kind of like only one, but the light bulb has to want to. It's kind of, there's some readiness factor here that we'll continue to work on it, and we'll continue to bring people along, and then back to where I started. As long as the board can keep the focus on those goals, it helps us, I mean, Wyeth and his team can continue to do that, it's kind of like, okay, now we've got everybody who has MTSS teams, now we need to get better on the data, and through next year, get everybody to the point where, yes, Home Room is what we use, and everybody does it, and here's your support, and you can talk to a colleague that shows you how to do it.
I believe that if we're spending this kind of money, this kind of talent, this kind of human capital, and we are committed to this work, that there has to be an accountability loop in this, and that waiting for folks to come along, or for the pendulum to swing another direction, is not good enough. I, I think that we need to either evaluate principals based on how many of their teachers are working Home Room, since, you know, we hear, I don't have the tools to do my job. Well, now we gave them the tools. And it's hard for me to tell a parent that two of their five teachers don't use Schoolology with fidelity, or keep our taxpayers' parents advised, and we bought a shiny new tool that can make us breakfast, and I'm really excited about this tool. I want to see real fidelity and real implementation, and I, I want to see some consequences for not using it. That's my two bits. Any other comments, concerns, or questions? And with that, we are adjourned at 9:00 PM. Thank you, and we will be moving into executive session to discuss potential litigation. We're gonna take five minutes.